Inclimate weather issues, so appreciate that work and would ask everybody to be careful while you're out there over the next couple of days. Of course, it'll be 70 degrees again before we know it, right? All right, well, we'll go ahead and get started with our staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Tonight's study session is utility rates and charges, and we're going to do this brief staff presentation before we get into the discussion, and I'll probably step back at that point, and I have a whole audience full of people who know the answers to your questions. As you remember, Avant Energy did electric, water, and wastewater rate study, and the objectives of that study are shown here, and we have David Niles tonight with Avant Energy who's able to zoom in and help answer questions regarding their rate study. And we also have New Gen Strategies and Solutions that did the waste management rate study. Their objectives are here. They were unable to have a staff member present tonight, but Chris Knight is going to be the expert with regards to the waste management rate study. So for the staff presentation, this was a team effort, and I want to recognize the people who participated in this because we put this together over the last month and a half as a group. Melissa Reams assisted with this, Paula Dennison, the Assistant City Manager, Bill Millis with Water Utilities, Kristy Kluck in Finance, Lauren Smith in Electric, Chris Knight in Waste Management, and Dana Maddox in Utility and Billing Services. And so generally, the rate studies themselves focus primarily on the impact on the utilities and making sure that the utility is collecting the revenue necessary to continue to operate. The other part of that picture and what staff wanted to focus on in the data that we're going to show you tonight is to focus on the person who's paying the bill. We're going to show you the impact of the recommendations on an individual customer's monthly bill, and we chose specific meters and specific customers that we're going to show you how this impacts their bill. And then we'll show you the combined impact of all the rate changes on their monthly bill. Like I said, we used actual customer data and account data, and we used a late summer billing. This would be around July or August. It depends on when you receive your bill, but we used the summer billing because we wanted to make sure that we had kind of the worst-case scenario. Those are the highest bills. And this data will be a year-to-year comparison for a single month. There's a lot of data on a customer bill, and there's a lot of data in the spreadsheets that we put together, so we tried to focus on just a snapshot that would give you a quick view of what's going on with their bill without overloading you with data. So I want to tell you a little bit about the customers that you're going to be looking at. Our residential customer is a family of four. They don't have a pool or irrigation. They live in a 2,300-square-foot house, and they use a 96-gallon trash cart. Our small commercial customer is a small retail showroom, 3,500-square-feet facility. They have an irrigated landscape, a 1-inch water meter, and a 4-cubic-yard dumpster. Our large commercial customer is a big-box retail 60,000-square-foot facility, irrigated landscape, 2-inch water meter, and a 4-cubic-yard dumpster. And then our industrial customer is a 350,000-square-foot manufacturing facility. They have a 2- and a 6-inch water meter, and they don't subscribe to waste management services. I think it's important to point out, as we look at these, that each customer's situation is different. If you have a pool or an irrigation system, and you're receiving a different bill because your usage is different. If you have a larger family or a bigger house, and even the age of the house can affect these. So while this is a snapshot of certain customers, and it's a snapshot of a certain month, everybody's situation will be different, and it can even be different from summer to winter, which is why we chose summer, because those are the worst bills in terms of water and electric. So I'm going to start with the electric recommendation. The recommendation that was made was to increase customer charges and demand charges, to decrease the energy use charges, and to reduce the transfer to the general fund to offset inflation. One question that you may want to consider is whether or not we reinstate the automatic escalator based on the Consumer Price Index as an alternative to reducing the transfer to the general fund. So in looking at the residential customer, I'll explain this slide in a little greater detail. The rest of the slides follow. Like I said, this is a snapshot of a month, the month of August roughly, depending on when you receive your bill. And this customer's bill would go down an average of $1.36 every August during the rate. So current year is August of the current year. Year one is August of the next year. Year two is August of the next year, and so on. So on the residential customers, they would actually see a decrease of $1.36 each year on their August bill. And on the small commercial, they would see a $9.11 decrease every year on their August Large commercial would see a $4.29 increase every year. And then the industrial customer would see a $1,985.69 increase on average every August. That may seem like a lot for the industrial customer, but their bills are in the $148, $150,000 range.
I was going to say, do you have a percentage? Is that a, as a percentage of their normal bill, what, how big of a decrease is that for any of those?
I can get you a percentage. I don't have it tonight, but the, remembering from the calculations roughly, I think the residential was around a 2% decrease, and the industrial is around a 6% increase. But again, that's going to vary from customer to customer. The water wastewater recommendations are a 3% rate increase with reduced capital expenditures, and that would include reducing water capital from 13.9 million to 12.6 million, and reducing wastewater capital expenditures from 8.4 million to 7.9 million. I'll go through towards the end the issues with water capital and wastewater capital. The reason that a 3% rate increase is recommended instead of what it would take to meet those capital needs is that we felt that a rate increase of that magnitude would be a concern for the customers. Another item to consider is an automatic escalator at the end of the rate plan when the current rate plan ends. And so for our residential customer, they would see a $1.48 average increase. Our small commercial customer would see a $7.23 average increase. Large commercial, $11.09. And then our industrial customer, $107.53. I have to let you know here that we had so many numbers, and inevitably, we got some of them mixed up. This is actually the winter number on water for the industrial customer, but the summer number is only $30 different, so it's not a significant difference, but I just wanted to point that out. It's very On the waste management recommendation, the recommendation is Scenario 5, and that includes 1.6 million for the recycling staging facility, some of which is already being considered as far as design, and then operating costs for that recycling staging facility. Those recommendations would include a residential and a commercial rate increase of 11.5% in year two and 4% in year four. And then the street sweeping rate would increase by 70 cents, in addition to some changes in how we do commercial roll-offs. That affects our residential customer would see a 72 cent average increase. Our small commercial, $4.87. Large commercial, $7.24. And then, as I said, our industrial customer doesn't subscribe to our waste management service, so they're not included here. Next up is the combined impact of these rate increases, and these are not averages. This is the actual dollar amount that you would see from the current to year five. So our residential customer by year five would see a $4.19 increase on their overall bill. Our small commercial would see a $14.89 increase. Large commercial would see a $113.13 increase, and the industrial would see $9,618.91. Some related issues for future discussion, not necessarily for discussion tonight, although you can touch on these, are the non-rate revenue fees and charges. Those are primarily related to things like return check fees and late penalties. Distributed generation rates, which are currently being under a study right now, and Lauren will be bringing those forward in the near future, so you're going to see more about that. The Oklahoma State University sewer flow data is about 15 years old, and we think that that needs to be checked again in the near future. And then I mentioned before water and wastewater capital expenditure needs. The rate increases that are necessary to meet the capital needs are somewhere in the neighborhood of 8% and 6% for water and wastewater respectively. And so those would be substantially more of an increase than the 3% recommendation, and that is something that perhaps needs to be also part of a future discussion. And then we also think that we ought to do a rural water systems study session in the near future. So topics for direction tonight, and we're not expecting decisions tonight, but we kind of want to get a general idea of where the council wants to go with this based on the questions and discussions. So if there are modifications, if any, that you, that come out of this study session to the rate recommendations, that would be one thing for future consideration. The resolutions adopting the rate structure would be brought forward at some point to the council for a decision, depending on the outcome of tonight's discussion. And then we think prior to doing a rural water study session, that we need to do a supplemental water rate study that would determine the cost of service specifically for the rural system. There's always been the question out there whether the rural system pays for its cost of operation or not, and so we think that studying it specifically would settle that once and for all, one way or the other. And then the other part of that would be to determine the cost of service for the wholesale customers, because the way things are now, our wholesale customers are paying a variety of different rates and for different reasons. There's no equity across the entire class and across the system, and not really even equity in terms of what retail rates are. So we think that that ought to be part of that supplemental water rate study. And with that, I will turn it over for discussion, and we have the experts in the room, so we can bring them up to help answer your questions.
Thank you, John. Councilors, questions? What questions do you have at this point?
When was the last time that we did a thorough study like this with utility and water?
So, Bill, water was 2015. Water and wastewater was 2015. What about electric?
This has been the first one since the late 80s or 90s, so it's been a long time.
So it's time?
Yeah, the cost of service study was well due, yeah.
Chris, do you know when waste management?
Other than internally, we've never done one.
Okay, Chris says that other than internally, waste management's never had a rate study
Do we have any sense of what the average increases have looked like over the course of the last 10 or 15 years in the city? What are, what our rates have looked like? I'd love to see, I mean, you probably don't have the answer for this question right now, but I would like to see sort of what our rates have looked like over the last 10 or 15 years. I'd really like to see those compared to other communities of our size and/or our service levels. And I would like to see what the percentage increases are. You know, if the industrial bill is on average $9,600 more than it is right now, five years from now, is that a 10% increase? Is that a 2% increase? How much are we really asking them to spend in addition to what they're already spending? I don't know if you have any of those numbers now, but if not, we'd like to see them at some point.
I don't think we have the numbers on the average increases, but we can sure get them for you.
David, didn't when you presented your, some of your cost of service and rate analysis, didn't you have some comparisons for comparable cities, I believe?
Yes, we made some comparisons both on the electric and water side to some of your comparators. And I can pull those up if you'd like, but...
Comparisons are in the report, aren't they?
They are.
The city comparison. Yeah.
Like the pure wastewater numbers are on 110 of that electric wastewater study.
Mm-hmm.
So there is, I mean, I guess there are some of those point-in-time comparisons, but I would like to see that kind of over the course of, same with our history of rates. I'd kind of like to see that history of rates for other, to the extent we can get that kind of information. So, yeah. Other questions, councilors?
I am very curious. In this list of topics for discussion, you know, making equity across the entire system, figuring, you know, the large industry or retail, you know, inconsistencies. I think, David, also, when you gave the report, you talked about the sewer flow from OSU would be, make a huge difference. I think the rural water system, you know, without having a picture of the entire, of all these related issues, it's difficult to, I would think, to set a policy for rate for our present customers, or, well, not present customers, but to meet that objective of fairness and equity across the entire
John, did I miss, did you say that this, is this just the first year increase that you were presenting? A one, I think most of the studies that we looked at were showing kind of a multi, kind of forecasted out maybe three to five years, if I recall correctly. Is this what you're presenting today, is just the first-year increment?
No, the customer data, and Dana's nodding, so I can make sure that I'm getting this right, but the customer data projects it out over the five years. So each of, each of that, each of those data points is around the month of August for the entire rate plan, all five years.
So that increase of like $7, I can't remember what the residential increase was, but was for the total of those five years?
That would be the increase each year out over those five years. So each year in August, they would see roughly $1.36. I think the residential actually decreases, so they'd see a $1.36 decrease in their electric bill for each of the planned years.
But then that, that final number you gave, the total number, was just what their bill would look like total between all of these utilities after five years?
Right.
The residential one would be $4 higher?
Correct.
Than it is right now.
That takes into account all of the rate changes across the board.
It's, it's hard to follow all the different iterations that, and you know, I know you're trying to get a lot of information in 24 slides. You did a really good job of doing
It is, I think, I mean, to me, one of the most important aspects of these rate studies is establishing that cost of service, really understanding how much does it cost to provide these services out to our community. And I think it also seems like it's important for us to do a good job at explaining those cost of service components before we start having, you know, and then kind of start having those conversations about rate increases and how we might do that. And it seems to me that, I'd be curious to know from an industry perspective, if there's been any trends this year with everything else that's going on in the world, if there's been a reluctance on the part of communities to increase rates, like this current year with everything going on with COVID, if they're meeting, if they're doing other things, if they're looking at, you know, are there, did we look through our rate study at kind of this one-time rate, when Noah and Chris was talking about waste management? I think when he was talking, he shared that the cost of disposing of waste soil, you know, that was this one unit cost that had gone up that we needed to increase. I wonder are there other things like that that we should look to, that are kind of one-time user fees and things like that, to help kind of cover those costs, because we don't, we're not comfortable raising rates at this time?
I think in terms of industry trends, David Niles might be able to speak generally to that.
Yeah, I would say that I think that more than freezing rates, for example, I think what you're really seeing is, you know, a moratorium on disconnections and those kinds of things is the main way that utilities are helping customers through these challenging times. I think most utilities are continuing to aim to set cost-based rates, and to get to your point, counselor, about fairness, that's why one of the rate objectives and why one of the things that we're proposing is this idea of moving rates on both the electric and water side, which is what I've worked on, towards cost of service. And in general, that means increasing fixed charges and demand-related charges and decreasing the per-unit consumption or energy or volumetric charges on the water side. And on the electric side specifically, the recommendation was no rate increase both across the board and within customer classes. And what Mr. McLennan is showing is, you know, what the utility department picked is sort of a representative customer, but what that also underscores is that no two customers look exactly alike. And so some residential customers are going to see a decrease, specifically ones that use more than average, because we're talking about moving up the customer charge, which is fixed regardless of how much you use, but bringing down the usage charge. So a customer that uses more than average because of that reducing of the rate will see more of a decrease than a customer that uses less than the average in the class. And same thing on the, on the industrial side. A customer that uses more demand relative to the amount of energy, so what we call in the industry a lower load factor customer, is going to see more of an increase than a customer that, you know, has their equipment on, say, running three shifts a day, you know, the machines are always going, and so their demand charges are going to be offset because there's a lot of usage every hour of the month. But that really, again, goes back to fairness and cost causation, and it's really, Stillwater has to build a utility system and have the infrastructure in place to take that maximum usage that a customer requires, regardless of whether they need it one hour out of a month or all 744 hours in a 31-day month. And so, you know, the idea again is that across the class overall as an average, within the electric study, the overall recommendation was a 0% rate increase, again, both utility-wide and within each customer class, but the reality is that within each class, you're going to have customers across a pretty wide spectrum of usage.
It's all coming back to me now. I still, to me, I think, I mean, going back to maybe a little bit what the mayor had said about kind of seeing the, it seems to me like our job right now is to get information out to the community a little bit more, kind of showing what our rates have looked like and what the cost of service is, and just do a little bit of, I mean, it's certainly been an education process for us. My goodness, if we haven't done a rate study since the 80s for electric, that's, that's a lot of new information for a lot of folks, by and
I think to your point, too, Amy, the, you know, I mean, after reading all these things and hearing this a couple of times, I understand the difference between cost of service and cost of product, but cost of services, I mean, I think for the, before I heard all this, I had no idea what the difference was. It just, you know, not really diagramming out my electric bill very well, or even knowing if it was on there, what was on there. Part of that, part of that education piece.
Yeah, and kind of explaining how that, why it works the way it works, right? So what David was saying about someone who uses less, when our rate is based mostly on the per-kilowatt charge, someone who uses less than average is actually not generating enough per-kilowatt to pay for the fixed cost of connecting power to their house. I mean, that's simplification probably, but, and then someone who's using a lot more is paying. And that's, I think that's part of the education, right, is that there are going to be people who say, well, there may be people who have that lower usage rate that might see an increase because we're saying, well, we want to make sure you're at least covering the fixed costs of the system, and then if you're not using as much, well, you know, you don't pay for it as much. But I think that, that distinction about making sure people, we've talked about this in the distributed generation realm of when we switched that rate structure, because people, you know, if you have a bunch of solar panels on your roof, well, you still have a line connected to your house, and we still have to maintain that system, even if you're not going to be using it as much as somebody else. Unless you fully disconnect, we've still got to make sure that we can, we can pay for all of those, those fixed costs. And I just think, I think that you're right. That is a, a concept that we don't really talk a lot about, right? I mean, I think when we talk about electric rates, we talk about this per-usage charge, and that's the way most people see it, is it's just a, how much power did I use this, this month, and that's what determines my bill. But this rate study, I think, helps us explain a little bit better that the power system is there, even if everybody has their lights off all month long, the power lines are still there, the maintenance is still there, the tree trimming is still there, all of the stuff that we have to do, we're still paying for. And so we've got to design a rate that covers all of that first, and then, and then talks about, okay, now we have this incremental power we have to buy to provide. But that, that, I think, education piece is a good for us. We've, we've, like you all have said, we've walked through that to sort of see how that works, and then we've got to do a good job of explaining to people what that means for them and their bill. I think it is helpful, though, to see that for some people, that is going to mean a decrease in how much they pay for power, especially, you know, folks who are using a lot of it. So, but, you know, others aren't going to see that.
I think in the sense of direction, you know, before, I mean, in this time while we're waiting for the rural water study and the idea of balancing the fairness of rates for all of our different users, and this is, this is absolutely the time to start that education piece, so that when we have all of that other information, which should affect in some way how we think about the rates, people will be a little bit more understanding.
Do we have a target? Do we have a target in mind for when, I mean, when we would like to make a, or execute a rate increase or rate policy, or I don't know, what are we calling it?
I would say I don't think that we have necessarily a target in mind. We want to answer the questions that you have and get the data that we feel like we need, and then we would move forward at that point when the council and/or trustees feel comfortable with moving forward with the resolutions.
Is our plan to do them all at once?
It can be, or we can do them individually.
In your slide, at the end, you know, 21, 22, that it has, you know, by year five, there'll be a 4.19 increase. That includes all of them.
Correct.
All at one time, right?
That's, that's, that's all of the rate changes, all of the electric, water, wastewater, and waste management changes combined.
I think that's a perfect example of a communication piece, right there, just knowing that all that's wrapped up into, into, into everything. And I think that's, it's key pieces like that, that I think the more that we can get that information out to people, I think, then it will be a little less daunting to them and that we're not just, you know, raising rates to raise rates. I mean, there's a thoughtful process of why we're doing this behind it.
And, you know, and it's just, you know, it's just a summary slide now, but it's, so it doesn't, it's, if you haven't been paying very close attention, you don't know it's by month, $4.19 increase a month by year five, but what's the first-year increase? And what's, what's the second year, third year, you know, 5 into 4.19 is whatever, however many dollars it is, it does, you know, it's not 4.19 next month, right?
Well, it's $4.19 in the month of August, which is the month that we chose for this presentation. We have all of the data that generates all these numbers, and it's possible to create any number of examples of how things work. We could do an entire year for a customer. We could do the, a different month. We have some winter data. So there's, there's a lot of ways that this can be presented. We chose the month of August as the worst-case scenario and because we really had to boil this down into a reasonable presentation.
Yeah.
I do, I do think that, I mean, that, I think that was a great idea, right, to show us August, to show us, probably when I paid the most attention to my utility bills. And to also give it to us in dollars, but I do think from an edu, I don't know, just from an understanding, having a percentage also would be helpful beyond, I mean, the dollars makes, that's probably what most people think in terms of, but I think the percentage could be helpful for people to understand as well.
I think it's also important that, well, I don't want to make a decision based off the fact that we'd say, oh, well, the most anybody would see in their August bill is $4.19 increase overall, because that's not necessarily going to be the case depending on, I mean, as you guys have noted many times, this is, this is an example based off one fairly average kind of account, but it's going to be different for everybody. Some people may not even see that increase, they may see a decrease over that number, or they may see a bigger increase depending on their unique circumstances. So I don't think we'd want to make a, you know, a statement that says, hey, this is what the rate increase is going to look like for you, or, you know, make any sort of blanket description of what it might look like, because it is going to be different for everybody. I think it's more important to explain what the changes in the rate structure are and why they're, again, that kind of balance between the fixed cost and the variable cost and, you know, an explanation of that and that there's going to be a large variety. Here are some examples of what it might look like, but it's going to affect people in different ways. We, you know, I don't want people to think, oh, they told me that I was only ever going to see a $4 increase in my bill, when, you know, for some folks, that might not be the case. But, you know, before-
I know, when we were going through the recycling task force and we were looking at some of these rates, it was interesting to watch the community members on the task force kind of try to get their arms around what that would look like, you know, what was the monthly expense, what was the highest expense that would show up, what was the percentage? It did seem like we started with percentage and people were constantly trying to get those into dollar bills. They were trying to understand, you know, oh, if it's just, you know, $2 a month more, maybe that doesn't seem like so much, but when you put it as, you know, 5% or 10%, that sounds a little bigger or something. I don't, it did seem like people were trying to get to that place. I think any way that we can help them digest it maybe in multiple ways would be helpful. Maybe even going back to some, I think they did a good job in the task force explaining, you did a good job, actually, I think, I mean, everybody that's explained rate, I understand rates way better than I ever thought I could. So grateful for the expertise that everybody's brought. But I think it may be understanding a little bit about what those services that we're actually providing, I think that was kind of a process we saw the recycling task force go through as well, like what's provided in this service exactly? What do I get for this amount of money? And then understanding how to kind of look at it from an increase or cost of service, you know, this is what it actually costs us to provide the service to you, and here's the rates that go along with that.
I think, you know, we're kind of focusing now on how do we sort of explain how this works when we talk to people about the rates changing. I think maybe before we really get to that point, we, there's a few of these discussion items that, that might actually change the amount that they do change, that those rates change. One being, you know, a couple of those things on here, the rural water system question and that, you know, seeing how much that adds to the cost of service and what that looks like and whether we need to do some sort of a reorganization of the rates around that. And then also the question of OSU sewer flow data, what effect would that have on, you know, any of this? I mean, if that's a discussion item of stuff we need to research further, how would that change what we're talking about here?
I think I'll defer that question to Bill.
Bill looks happy about having that deferred.
He knew that was a possibility.
Bill Millis, water utilities engineering director. The, the main question about the OSU sewer situation is the volume. So they pay the retail rate per thousand gallons, but it was in 2001, 2003 was the last time there was a comprehensive monitoring of the flow coming out. They connect our system in 14 different places, so it's not easy, and measuring sewer is not easy. But anyway, so that's the main question is the volume of sewer that's coming off campus and that we're collecting. The rate is, is not necessarily in question at this point. And the volume, you know, over 15 years, you could say the population has gone up, so surely they're producing more, but also conservation measures, new fixtures, getting rid of infiltration, you could make a case that their flow might have gone down. So that's why, you know, we don't know which way that's going to go.
Yeah, so it's not absolutely like clear that we should be charging them much more because it's been so long. Because we actually had this discussion in the, one of the water wastewater discussion presentation we had before where we saw use of water was actually down over a certain period of time, right?
Exactly, yeah. The, our overall water demand has been trending down, you know, for various reasons, some we can identify, some we can't.
What does it take to get, I mean, it sounds like it would be complex to redo and figure out how much are they exactly dumping into the system? How would we go about doing that and what kind of a timeframe would we have?
We are, it's, it's pretty involved. It would be in the, you know, deploying the monitors and maintaining them over several month period, and you hope that it rains during that period because you need to measure the response of the system during a rain event, so you know how much is coming in through rain gutters and seeping in and things like that. So it takes some time, it takes some expense. One thing we're implementing right now with, you know, we've talked before about the College Gardens Water and Sewer Replacement Project. Part of that project will include some flow monitoring of our own to properly size the sewer lines. And what we're going to include in that is to make sure we've, can split out how much of that flow comes off campus, because some of the connection points are in that area. We'll also work with the university to know what their future plans are in that basin so that we can properly size the sewer. But the point related to tonight is that when we do that monitoring, we hope to have some kind of an idea, at least on that part of campus of, or how, or how are these numbers in comparison to what they were 15 years ago?
How does that data, the sewer flow data relate to, we've talked before about like the runoff charges, right, for certain types of businesses or houses? Like we have a, I can't remember what the, what the actual category of the stormwater fee?
Stormwater.
Yeah, that's separate from what we're talking about here.
Yes.
Correct? Would, would there be a, also be a, would we be able to help calculate whether their stormwater runoff should be addressed in some way? Or would that be a totally separate?
Outside the scope of this study.
Okay.
Some stormwater gets into the sewer system, but typically they're ideally 100% separate. So you do, in the monitoring, you want to account for how much stormwater is getting in so that if a customer, whether it's a single house, whether it's a university, if they're contributing rainwater that they shouldn't, you want them to pay for it.
Yeah.
So you want to address that, but the regular stormwater per se is not addressed by this kind of study.
And the stormwater fees in general are not included in any of these rate studies?
No.
Okay. While you're up here, Bill.
If the, if you were, you're doing all this work in university gardens, Bill?
Yes, ma'am.
Wouldn't that be, if you were able to monitor the university gardens and compare that to 2001, 2003, would, would that not be representative of the entire campus?
We want to use that as a gauge, but it may or may not be able to extrapolate because there may have been more or less development in that basin than in other parts of campus, more or less work on conservation and new fixtures and things like that. So we'll look at it, and it may look like, hey, this is pretty representative, we can use that. I think that's more hope than a expectation, but, but the comparison will definitely help. If they're, you know, if they're real close, then maybe we don't need to investigate farther.
Water wastewater capital expenditures. So this, this proposed rate we're talking about in these numbers is just a 3% increase that, that doesn't include capital expenditures in the future.
It includes reduced, it includes capital expenditures reduced from the identified need.
So in relation to the whole conversation we had a while back about the Caw pipeline and the wastewater treatment plant and all those changes, what would these, what would adopting this kind of rate structure, how would it affect those, those plans?
The, the capital improvement plan includes improvements like, you know, we had talked about ongoing and future improvements that are needed at the water treatment plant. Those sorts of things are included in the capital plan. You know, not everything, but all the things that we can identify as an upcoming need are included. Big things like whether we replace or parallel the Caw or what we do there, you know, a whole new plant, things like that are not within the scope of this capital improvement plan. Those are, you know, a whole nother issue that would require, that are not supportable by, you know, the routine rates.
At this level or even at somewhat, I mean, I guess at some point, if we were going to do that, we'd have to, we'd have to talk again about whether, whether water rates needed to be adjusted to help pay for some of those improvements?
Correct.
Are you saying that those would be, I mean, those are so, they're large enough that they require some other sort of funding mechanism, like a bond or something like that?
Yes, that's right. As part of the evaluation of how to move forward with that program, that would include funding different possibilities, make probably a combination of different things, but whether it's a loan or a bond or whatever.
Just to make sure I understand this, because I want to make sure, conceptually, I'm thinking of this right. John, you had said for the, for the water, capital expenditure needs, we were looking at about 8%. For the wastewater, we were looking at about 6%. Obviously above the 3% increase revenue proposed. So am I thinking of this right? If, if we go forward with this rate structure as proposed, that gets us half of the way there for wastewater, for example. Is that right? Or do I, do I, am I misunderstanding that?
I don't know that the three and the six, you can directly correlate like that. I don't think that it would be halfway there because a large chunk of, of the expenditures for water and wastewater are in O and M, not in capital. And I think, I think your slides showed how much, what the capital shortfall would be. There you go. The 3% rate increase would reduce water capital from 13.9 million per year to 12.6 million per year. So that's just 1.3 million. On the wastewater side, to use your 3% to 6% comparison, it would reduce it from 8.4 million per year to 7.9. So that's just half a million, you know, 1, 6, something less than, less than 10%, I think. Yeah.
So just in terms of normal capital expenditures, does that, how big of an impact does that have on your ability to continue to maintain the water and wastewater systems? I mean, I guess, let me put it this way, the higher rate at those, with those bigger budget numbers for capital expenditures, I mean, that involves something that we think we need at some level, right? Looking at it that way. And if we're saying we don't want to increase rates that much, we need to hold it back a little bit, how, I mean, I guess we're saying these are, yeah, I mean, those things that were in the budget but we're not going to be able to fund are not that important, I suppose? Or we just think we can push it out farther? Or how does that work?
I mean, that's what we'd be making the decision to defer, you know, on a, on a big scale, this is maintenance, like maintaining your car. You decide you don't have enough this year, you're going to cut it by 10% or whatever. You, I don't think we can, we can't promise you and say, hope everything will be okay.
Yeah.
You just increase the odds of, you can have potentially, or theoretically, more line breaks, more potential sewer backups and overflows, more equipment failures. You know, the answer's kind of in between, oh, no problem, and, oh my gosh, things are going to fall apart. You know, it's, and it's, I can't pin down just where it's going to be. It just, but it increases, if you're not addressing that maintenance needs, it increases your odds of adverse events.
But you can't tell me, well, that's only one oil change a year instead of three?
Correct.
So then is the, that I'm following, that 3% that reduces capital, I'm getting a very big echo, that doesn't meet our capital expenses, but then why are we looking at that doesn't meet our capital expenses, but so then why are we looking at percent in something, so something higher?
The um, as John stated, the main concern there is impact to the customers.
Right.
That sometimes, you know, just like doing your own budget, sometimes you gotta, you decide that you need to defer maintenance, even though you know that you would prefer not to or maybe shouldn't.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was the re- that that was the reasoning that went in there. So one of the things that is at the end of each of these recommendations is discussion about um moving to an automatic escalator at the end of the rate plan. If I remember right, didn't, I think it was right as I came onto council, did we cancel an uh an automatic escalator on one of, was it? Lauren, was it on the electric rate?
I think all of the.
Yes, it was, I believe it was both, uh, for sure electric.
Water, water and sewer as well.
All of the automatic escalators were put on hold.
And we did that because we were looking at surpluses in those accounts that made us think, well, maybe we don't need, you know, maybe our rates could be adjusted in some way that we don't, we don't need this much money coming in, right? I mean, that's how that came up.
Right, yeah.
Well, there's a little bit of a difference.
Kind of let us know that as well. So we knew that was coming.
Right, it was kind of that bigger picture, right? At the same time, we were looking at some of those fund balances, trying to understand what the policy might be around those fund balances and then understanding what cost of service was that would inform those fund balances as well as rates, right? So I guess my question is, I hope that we will be completing these rate studies more often than every 30 years now. Um, if that's the case, does the escalator, why, would the escalator help us in any way? Or what would the function of the escalator be as opposed to just looking at our our rates on a more regular basis?
I think the escalator would allow for steady, slow and steady increases, which was is always a, i- if they're warranted, uh, which is always uh a better than foregoing rate increases over time. And you know, five, six years down the road, you say, oh, man, we need a 5% increase when you could slowly increment that up and uh, you know, we certainly have the list of uh what the increases were since 2011. And, you know, they're they're eight tenths of a percent or 1% or 1.5%. So, you know, they're not just huge. And so I I think that's the goal of the automated CPI escalator is to slowly and steadily increment and not get to a point where you go, oh, we haven't had an increase in 10 years and now we need 10, 20% to maintain our cost of service. So, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I mean, just if I could add to that, I mean, I've I've worked with cities that are in that exact situation that Lauren was just talking about where they, you know, didn't take action, whether it was because, you know, people didn't want to vote for rate increases on city councils or whatever, especially near election times. And then all of a sudden, you're in a a bad spot where to go back to the discussion we were just having, it's, you know, something bad's going to happen if we don't maintain this or, you know, we're we're losing money and those funds are going to run out of money. Um, and and councillor, just to address your question earlier about looking at fund balances, that that 3% scenario with the reduced capital expenditure does include um a planned drawdown of some of those uh fund balances that that you were referencing. So that was looked at and incorporated into the set of recommendations.
Right.
So on the automatic escalator, one other aspect that we discussed on the electric side is is in lieu of reducing the transfer to the general fund. It might be something that you want to consider because the the rate recommendation includes reducing the transfer to the general fund.
If you had an automatic escalator, would it be on the cost of service or the cost of the product or the combined cost?
I think on both of these, we're looking at basing it on the consumer price index.
Yeah, but does that increase the per per kilowatt hour price or is it the base cost or how how does that? Is it both?
It it would be applied across the rate, each rate.
Okay.
And it would include demand, kilowatts, you know, everything and every component in the rate.
With an automatic, and I I probably should know this already, but with that with something like that in place, does that automatically happen every year without council input? Or is there a question every year of whether that should be applied or not?
It it has in the past for electric.
Just, it just happens?
Yes, every uh the the uh consumer price index for the previous year comes out like January the 15th. And then after that, they were applied to the uh to the next month's, you know.
But we we can, like we did recently, step in and say, no, we don't want to apply it this year.
It's always an option.
One is in the January and one is in Fe- uh, I mean, July, right?
Uh, I'm only aware of the one that that we looked at for electric was uh, yeah, I believe it was like mid-January that it came out, but I wasn't uh tracking the one in July, if there is one, so I don't know.
I think that was water. I mean, there were, there were two different times when they, two different entities, but whatever.
I'm getting nods here in the room that that's correct, that electric is in January and water is in.
Would that, would the automatic escalator be in lieu of these other rate increases or would it be these rate increases and then the escalator to continue us forward?
It would be the rate increases and then the escalator. Except on the electric side, if you decided that you wanted to do the the automatic escalator as a offset to the reduction to the general fund.
Yeah, and that's a good clear uh point to clarify, uh, electric rates are proposed increase. They're proposed to stay the same.
You've probably wanted to say that this whole time, haven't you?
Yeah.
Stop talking about my increases.
Yeah, there's no increase.
They're not happening.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So what is the um, what is the overall effect on fund balances of the proposed, these proposed rate changes? I mean, what does it look like for our fund balances? What does it look like for our transfers? I thought that might get Christie up here.
Yes. Um, so fund balances, by implementing this rate structure, uh, our reserve targets are protected. And like Dave said, this does draw down some of those cash balances, that's the assumption. Um, but we do protect our reserve balances.
And and we've established some policy around what those targets are for those reserves, right?
We don't have formal policy yet, that's still in the works, but we do have those identified and we're sticking with that plan.
So we don't have actual numbers?
We have numbers, we just don't have it in policy form.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And then with without the CPI on the electric rates, what is the reduction in transfer?
Over the course of the five years, it's about a 1.5 million dollar. Um, so from current or test year to year five, it's about 1.5 million dollar change.
Total?
Total.
Okay. Hey, Christie, um, we returned 5 million or so, we're talking about returning 5 million or so from the transfer back to the SUA in this fiscal year.
Correct.
What is, what's the history over the last few years of how much of it?
The prior year, yeah, the prior year, it was 2.9 million. And we did, council did take action to leave that uh or reappropriate it for capital rather than returning it to the SUA. Um, it was less than that the the year before. But that's a fairly new practice. I think that transfer policy was adopted in 2016, uh, so.
Of returning it back?
Of returning it back, yeah, it's a fairly new process.
I mean, years before that was that that excess transfer was just retained in the general, general fund?
Correct, yes.
But there was excess transfer in prior years as well?
Um, probably so.
Yeah, I think there was.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the question of over the course of five years of reducing that fund transfer by a million and a half dollars doesn't actually wouldn't have put us in the red in any one of these budgets?
Not in recent years, no.
Good.
Thanks to your good work.
Thank you.
Good point. Yeah.
Clarification. Um, we are in the process of a stormwater master plan. And they will be bringing recommendations to you on that fee because it's one that needs to be looked at, hasn't been changed since, I think, the 1980s maybe, when it was adopted. And secondly, uh, one of the councillors asked about the timing of these rates. And there is one rate that's fairly time sensitive. If we want to undertake the recycling staging facility, we would need to act on that rate because built into that rate is the money to fund the construction of that facility. You may need to take action on that one as opposed to any of the others.
Thank you.
Do you mean take action next week or this month or?
Well, it's my understanding, I think, and Chris helped me here with the staging facility. What, were we supposed to be online uh in 2021?
Yes.
Okay. So June of 2021, July?
Actually, it was structured uh that January is when we need to start to be online.
We would need to collect the new rates starting in January to be able to.
When would the facility, the facility be built, though? When would you start that?
Uh, well, we'll start building it and uh our hopes is in June 2021.
Okay, so building it, so we really need to act on that rate.
Right, so we was hoping to have money built up.
Mm hmm.
For those of you that may not have heard that, Chris was indicating that the plan was to have, if we're going to do the facility, that staging facility, we'd need that rate in place starting in January to have the funds available so that construction could start later in the summer, June uh of 2021. So overall, we're talking about not changing electric rates substantially. We're changing the structure of those rates, but not a change in the overall increase or decrease of of the rate itself, right? I mean, that's that's the um, the upshot on the electric. We're talking about water, a 3% actual rate increase, correct? And that's on, that's on the per gallon cost of water, right? Is it, is there a change on the water side to the underlying cost of service numbers? Or do those stay the same? Or are those structured the same way?
It's a combination of a overall rate level increase as well as some movements uh to to bring the rates more in line with cost of service. And then, so but but that 3% rate increase includes the effects of making those changes to towards cost of service, if that's helpful.
So, yeah, okay, so it it changes both the pieces of that, but overall, it's a three, it would be a 3% increase in the cost of water. And then the waste ones, we've we've talked about, and I can't remember what the specific percentages were. Um, on option D, what was the, or option four, or whatever the?
Eleven and a half and four.
Yeah.
And the 11 and a half comes first.
Which is designed to help fund the staging facility. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, 11 and a half percent comes in year two and 4% comes in year four.
And Chris, will you remind us of that 11 and a half percent sounds like a big number? But can, when you um apply that to our um trash or waste rate, can you remind us what the dollar amount would be for that?
Uh, well, the 11 and a half is um close to the 1.6 million dollars just needed to build the facility and included that in that is to operate the facility and to the for the processing of the materials to take it to either Tulsa or Oklahoma City, whichever way way we end up going.
And but the monthly uh rate increase with that 11%?
Um, well, the whole inquiry.
I can't.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I couldn't recall what our monthly, I should know that, um, what our monthly uh trash waste rate was.
Uh, well, used in the study was the 96 gallon cart, which currently is like 18, $18 and some change right now. Um, in year five, the 96 gallon cart will be $21. So it it comes to, I can't remember the exact number, but $2 and something increase on that 96 gallon cart by year five.
That's what I was trying to, trying to get at. Thank you.
Yeah, for the residential customer here, it was an average of 72 cents a year. I mean, year over year, 72 cents a month, average over that five years. Is that, that was this slide, right?
Right, but it it's important to remember that's 72 cents in the month of August.
Well, trash, it's the same in August and July.
Trash is a little more, a little more.
Yeah.
But that 72% average increase is the fact that year two, there's a big jump, and then year four, there's a jump. But the other years, it's steady.
The other years, it's flat. And the other thing about that, too, is that we included the uh street sweeping in with the 96 gallon cart. So it's a little bit different than it would be if either was looked at by itself.
So that that's one of those places where the way it gets communicated is a little, needs some some work or some, you know, we'd have to look at that, right? Because you're talking about averaging 72 cents a month of an increase over the course of five years. But people would actually see a couple extra dollars on their bill at one point. They're not going to see a slow 72 cent increase um year over year. They're going to see a jump in year two and year four.
Yeah, and I think making sure they, I mean, there's a, there's a capital project in there, too, right? That it's helping to fund and understanding that, I think, is useful and helpful as well. I don't know, I I think that, you know, just like at home, you if you understand your bills a little bit better, it's a little easier to to pay them. So I think it's helpful to the community to have this information.
What is the adoption process when we get to the point of, I mean, there's a resolution that we adopt. Is there a required public hearing of any kind? Is there any sort of additional input that's that's required?
No, just adoption of a resolution establishing the rate schedules.
Okay, what else?
I just had one more question for David. But through this rate study process, we're um getting closer, right, to our cost of service. We're trying to get those more equalized. Once we do that, like this kind of we're getting that done, do those, do they start to stray away from each other after a certain amount of time? Or or does that get us kind of on the level for a little while? I mean, I we, I will advocate always for us to have a consistent look at our rates. I think that's super important, but does it give us a, like, once you kind of get a course correction, are you good for a little while?
Yeah, I'd say you're good for a little while. I think that's important to note, though, that the, you know, the the components of cost and the relationship between the fixed and variable components. You know, for example, 10, 15 years ago, when natural gas prices were higher, wholesale power costs were a lot higher. And so the variable component was probably higher as a percentage of the total. And you have a PCA that captures things like that. Uh, but there are, could be other, other structural changes um to your cost structure that that might necessitate or might suggest that it would be appropriate, you know, to increase or decrease fixed charges relative to variable. But, you know, those aren't things that are likely to swing widely in a short period of time at the same time. And that's why, you know, we like to tell people, you know, look at cost of service, you know, every two, three years kind of thing. It was probably not something you necessarily need to pay for every year. And I know it's been a while since you've done this, but you know, ideally, you'd like to look at it a little more frequently. Um, and so, but but I I think that, you know, taking this step in this direction is is a big step towards moving those, the co- the rates to cost of service. And, you know, a periodic review on some kind of a frequency after that is probably a good idea.
Thank you.
One other question that um popped into my head, that the transfer from SUA to general fund comes only out of. fund comes only out of, of these three, just out of the electric, is that correct? It doesn't come out of water?
It does not come out of water, wastewater, but it does come out of waste management as, as well, excuse me, and waste management's cost of service, I believe, has a million-dollar transfer, it's just a flat million across the, the years.
Okay. So, the water, the water increases would not be funding transfer in any level, they're, they're really just related to the system itself, and, and the cost of service, and the, the cost of the, the variable water, okay. What do you guys need from us?
Well, I think we take the, the discussion tonight, and go back and get some of the information that you've asked for, and come back in the near future with some more answers.
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, I don't, I mean, it, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of discussion around the rate structure itself, I think the questions around some of the stuff that we'd want to at least make sure that we're talking about, how are we doing the OSU, now I got my slides all out of order, but how are we studying the OSU wastewater, or sewer charges, or whichever term we're using for that, there it is, the sewer flow data, and then what's the plan with the rural water system study session, and how would that affect it, but I, I don't know that either one of those is going to need to be done, or have that data before we actually make decisions on these rates, but we'd certainly want to know what the plan would be on, on each of those things.
Well, right now, as I understand it, on the rural water, the, the rate, the rate, if, the rates would go into effect across the board for all the customers, so...
Yeah, we discussed that, right? I mean, the water rates, the way our agreements are set up with the Rural Water Corps, they pay the same rates as everybody else in the city. I think that's the question we need to discuss, about whether, how much are our residential city customers subsidizing the rural water systems at this point? I, I think that's a, a good question that we need to answer, but, but it doesn't necessarily affect this discussion on a huge level. Councillors, any other questions or issues you want to make sure staff addresses before we, the next time we discuss this, I suppose?
I guess I would just like to encourage some sort of community campaign out to the community in terms of just explaining what our services are and process, I don't know, just starting to get some of that language out there.
I would like, I would definitely second that. It's, it's just crucial to get clear information to the, to all of our customers, and I, I personally would like to see, not necessarily, that, that the rural water question has to be settled, or OSU's sewer, or storm drainage, or whatever, has to be settled, but I would like to know the progress and the, the, the schedule for that, to know that, know that we actually are committed to doing that in, in a timely manner.
And speaking of schedules, this is not someone for staff, but we need to...
We have a time sensitivity with the waste management rate, do we need, do we want to set a time, or an agenda date to look at that, if we're trying to implement something by January 1st?
I was thinking that, too, John, but I also think, you know, we've had a lot of conversation, I mean, between the recycling task force and multiple presentations to us, I feel like we've, we've talked, I mean, we can definitely talk about it some more, but I feel like we have talked about that quite a bit, in terms of bringing in the, you know, the public task force, and, and then having them present to us, and this was a part of that presentation, and then, I think Chris has presented to us several times since, but maybe there's just a little mini campaign that can go, just to kind of educate folks, and then, seems like we should be able to move on that one.
I understood, John, just, just be asking when we would do that resolution. Is there a date?
Right, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I don't think that we need to...
In the near future, so...
I agree with you, councillor Jaloski, it's been discussed, and I think that, that at least in my mind, ready to move forward with, with a resolution on that, just what, I guess my question is, is how soon can we do that?
And what, yeah, is there a lead time in terms of...
Right.
Like, it has to be done 60 days before the rate changes, or?
No, probably you want to do it, first meeting in December.
December 7th, isn't it, Patty? First meeting in December.
And that would give us enough time to implement everything for a January 1st rate modification?
We just need to schedule it to the badge, so...
Yep.
Well, I think it makes sense to, I mean, we can prepare those resolutions on, on all the rates, I don't know if we'll be ready to consider all of them, that meeting, but certainly the waste management one. I think councillor Jaloski's point is well taken, we've, we've covered that issue quite a bit in the last few months, and talked a lot about it, so, yeah, if we can get those ready to go.
Absolutely.
Anything else you were wanting us to talk about, or need us to provide information-wise for staff?
Don't think so.
Any other questions, councillors, on any of these topics for this evening?
Fascinating reading.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I, I mean, I think this is why we are elected to these positions, so we can go through these hundreds of pages of rate studies, and learn all this stuff, and other, everybody else in the community doesn't have to, but for people who are interested in this discussion, and these, you know, how these numbers come about, these are very detailed, and very well-presented, and very thorough discussions of these rate studies, I mean, these are very valuable documents, and they're available to anybody who wants to take a look, and all of us, I think, you know, are certainly available to answer questions from folks who want to know why, or where, or, you know, how, how certain numbers were brought about, we can at least walk through it with people if they, if they have questions, and certainly staff would be willing to answer those questions as well, but there's a lot of information in these, you know, like you said, somebody said earlier, this is not just a, hey, let's look at a 3% increase, and, you know, just coming up with a number that sounds good, it's, it's based on a whole lot of research and a whole lot of data, so take a look at those if you're interested.
I think it's interesting, actually, and it really is fascinating, and it's also interesting to recognize that these rates are not determined just on hard data, and they're also based on more soft data, what's fair, what's, what people's appetite, you know, what's going on in the world. I think it's a great complex presentation, and, and gives me a great appreciation for all the services that I get from the city.
David, thank you for being here, and for adding some more insight after the conversations you've already had with us, we appreciate that. Anything else, councillors? And if not, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor, and a second from councillor Jaloski. Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councillor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote, with a vote of five to zero, the city council meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for being here.